Yeah, everyone, I will call the Cook County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting to order. We're supporting community through quality public service. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We started a few minutes late because as of this morning, we have quite a little blizzard out there, so, and some technical troubles, so, but it's not too bad at 8:36. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Madam Chair. I'd like to add an item towards the end, maybe between the auditor and administrator, about commissioner assignments.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Otherwise, I'll hear a motion to approve.
So moved.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We now have a public comment period. If there's anyone who wishes to appear before the board, please do so, and we see nobody in the audience today. Like I say, it would be really a due diligence if they were to come in the storm that we have today. Then we'll move on to the consent agenda. You've had time to look that over. Hearing no questions or comments, a motion to approve.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. One of our biggest discussions we've had in the last few months, year, is working with the transfer station project. And last week at our Committee of the Whole, we had a very good presentation in terms of what kind of building materials and what type of building we really want and size, and they've done their really good work on working with the architect to get it to a size that's reasonable for our area. The one area that we really wanted to find out is how would recycling and waste material strike the public in terms of fees to pick up their materials? And so, we put that over to Bob to give us some answers on how that would affect the general public. And Bob is here, so would you like to come up by the microphone and give us some stats on that, please?
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. So I did put together a spreadsheet that we can plug in different numbers and see what the different options might come out for, you know, what a resident or a commercial property might pay. I'm not sure if Brady, or if there's been a decision on what that first-year collection is going to be. I think there were a couple of options, you know, using one building versus the other. So those would also be a factor on what we punch into that first-year number, but using the number that we had at our Committee of the Whole meeting, that was the number that Ellers had given us, and I don't know what building type that was taking into account, and if it was taking into account the Hovland and Tofti options, but if we, we can pull it up on the screen. Does that share on all of your monitors as well?
Yes, it does.
Perfect. So, yeah, I'll probably try to bring this over. So, what's on the screen there, there's a few different ways I set it up so that we could look at it, and unfortunately, I don't think looking at the zoning, like the land use zoning, is going to be a good option, just because, number one, we don't have the city zoning entered into our assessment information. We do everything outside of the city of Grand Marais. But also, there's a lot of mixed-use zoning, so you have residents in, you know, RCR districts, you have vice versa. So I think that, you know, looking at it by classification might be the best option. That's also something that, as things change from year to year, it can be tracked, and, you know, those updates can be made if a property use changes over the years of this. So you can see in the very top left, there's an analysis by if we just applied a similar fee to all parcels and didn't do a tiered system of, you know, residential versus commercial, but just applying it to every taxable parcel, that 383-589 is the number that Ellers had come up with for the first-year collection. And then, I believe the way that spreadsheet worked was it was just anticipating like 1% growth in the residential collections, or something along those lines. So it really kind of started off with this base-year number, and that would amount to a fee per parcel of 4480. So, the 4480 would be if you had just applied it consistently to every single parcel. I don't know administratively why, that might be the easiest. Also, in kind of looking at it in context of if this was just put into the levy, this is the dollar-for-dollar impact that it would, well, no, it wouldn't, because every value determines the slice of the pie, so it would be a little different. Now, down in the orange boxes, I broke it out by classification, and the first box includes vacant land and vacant commercial land as part of the fees. The second box includes, you know, doesn't include that vacant land. You can see there, if you look, the residential vacant land and the commercial bare land, there's no fee accounted for, nothing collected. So what I'm talking about is in this box right here, these commercial bare land and vacant land would not be subject to a fee. So, using, you know, the way that Ellers had it set up, it was 25 and 50, it was, you know, one, the commercials paid double what the residential's paid. So that's why, the way I tried to set it up was, it would be 4280 per residential parcel and 8560. So, you can see, you know, raising the fee on those commercial properties, unless you do more than double, it doesn't really reduce the fee on all the other properties. And then going over to this column, if you were to eliminate the vacant land from the equation, you'd be looking at like 6235 per residential and 12470 per commercial. So, you know, I don't know if the number is going to end up being this 383-589, but if it was something different, we can just punch that into this box, and that's where this is calculating. So like, if we needed 500,000 in the first-year collections, this is what the two different payments would be. And you can do the same thing up here, if we punched 500,000 into here, it's going to calculate that payment amount 5840. So this is interactive, and, you know, depending on how the Commissioners wanted to set it up, if they wanted to include vacant parcels, you know, one of the pieces of the conversation was that, you know, this is, I think, to ensure that trash can be collected in Cook County, and, you know, vacant land, it could also be subject to the fee as part of, you know, keeping people from dumping trash in areas they shouldn't be, which includes vacant land. So, I set it up so it could be looked at either way, or a number of different ways, and we can play with the numbers depending on what the board decided to do with the different options. Are there any questions on the spreadsheet?
Commissioner Mills?
Thank you, Chair. Thanks, Bob. This is really helpful. So, how onerous would it be to have, say, a lesser rate for vacant land than residential and others?
That wouldn't be that difficult. Effectively, we can change the fee here, and that's going to kind of play through the whole, the whole screen. So, you know, if I reduce this, then I'm going to have to increase all of these, but that's where all, that's where it's going to calculate, the total we get, it's going to add, sum up all the fees that we collect in total, and then these percentages are what's being used to calculate these different options. But, you know, say if we wanted to look at, you know, maybe making the fee on vacant land a flat $10, that brings the collection down by, you know, almost 100,000, about $90,000. So we have to up these, and, you know, that would just be a manual process of updating those to where they summed out to that 383.
Yeah. I was, because these seem like the two, the two ends are, you know, trying to meld these two is kind of what I was thinking, and I was just wondering how difficult it'd be to have different rates for these different...
It wouldn't be difficult. We could easily, I could easily manipulate the spreadsheet so that it was less onerous. We could make it so we're literally just entering in the collections based on a percentage of collecting on that property.
Just thinking like...
So if I punch in 10, well, it wouldn't be 10%, but let's see what a $10 fee does to this. That makes it about 9% of the overall collection. So if I change this to 10%, it's going to calculate it down in this column, but we're, now we're collecting on 500, so if we change that to 383.5, so then the fees would be 54. It didn't work right, because this is 14, it's not quite...
Yeah, we don't have...
One way or another, we can get there relatively simply if that's the option that the Commissioners want to choose.
Yeah, I guess I was just wondering, I mean, we have to do it on the fly here, but I was just wondering, can we have a higher rate for, say, resort or commercial than it is here, and have a lower rate on vacant land, and, you know, just have different rates? I mean, making those decisions might become difficult for us, but I'm just trying to find what's the most fair for our residents and just how we can make this affordable for all, so...
Commissioner Campbell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think the question for us is, you look at the service provided, which we had some discussion in our Committee of the Whole meeting, and how we perceive these various classifications as to their using that service. So I think it would be unfair to make an assumption that says that vacant land never uses the service, so, and I think from public perception, which is important to consider, is this fairly and equitably set up? And so if we figure, and part of that can come from an understanding, you know, from Dustin as to what he sees. In other words, you look at the commercial impact, you look at the residential, you look at the vacant land, whatever. And so what we're trying to do is, we're trying to find, as Commissioners, the most equitable way to distribute cost relative, based upon what our experience tells us. And if we do that, it's fairly based. So, when I look at the classification comparisons, it's like, if we eliminate this one, I think, people say, "Well, how can you do that? Don't they ever use it?" And I had suggested, maybe if we looked at a fee basis for funding, then it would be based upon, if you use it, you pay the fee. If it was built into how we structured our fees, if our fees were still competitive within the marketplace. So it's not an add-on assessment, it comes through a fee structure. My point is, that reflects, a fee structure would, if you use it, you pay. And what we're looking for is, if you use it, you should be included in the classification at some rate, if that makes sense.
Well, I know it confuses it when I throw the fee thing in there, but I'm just saying it reflects on the fact that if you're using it, you're paying for it. And we have to determine how much is used relative our classification assignment, you know, as to what that fee would be. I hate to use the word fee there, that assessment would be, yeah.
Thank you, Chair. So where would the vacant land fit into all that?
In a fee structure?
Yeah.
Well, and again, this is aside from, if you look at, how could we fund this? Well, say, let's put, let's build it into our fee, and that way, if you use it, if a vacant land person goes to the transfer station and drops off stuff, they'll pay, because it's in the fee. That's different than the assessment, it's a completely different concept as to how you would fund it. But if we're looking at all options, if you put it in the fee structure in order to cover the debt, and it made our price so way out of line as far as being competitive, that might be problematic. So, I don't want to confuse it by the fee structure, but the reason I brought it up is the fee structure is tied to use. And if we don't look at a fee structure, then we're looking at an assessment based upon an understanding of use, which Dustin can sort of help us understand. And there, we're trying to make it an equitable distribution for funding based upon our best understanding of use.
Bob, I have a question. What is the fee, and we talked a little bit about this at Committee of the Whole, what is the fee now for residential versus business? I don't have anything picked up, so I don't know. If I have my garbage picked up, how much is residential?
Oh, I have no idea, I'm not sure...
Rena might be able to answer that.
Here she floats in.
Very smooth.
So, I'm not sure what the difference is, because it's, the dumpsters are generally for the commercial, and so that's going to be by volume. Or I think the residential fee is sort of a weekly fee, depending on how much. But this isn't about, about what trash you generate, this is about, you know, everybody contributing to an infrastructure. It doesn't reduce the cost of their garbage, or it doesn't do that. I mean, there is, there's definitely volume differences, like what happens, say, at Sawbill Outfitters with all the national park campgrounds and people coming in and out of Boundary Waters is probably a lot more than a much smaller outfitter has. So, it's not like, this is more about, what's the best way for everyone to contribute to infrastructure for the county and spread that out, for us to be able to, you know, manage our solid waste into the future and stabilize some of those operational costs.
Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell?
Rena, thanks for showing up.
You're welcome.
I would respectfully disagree on the, I don't disagree on the concept of everybody's share, and that's what we're challenged with, is how do we do that equitably?
Sure.
And I think if we say, "Well, the focus is on providing the service, and we'll just, across the board, assess," and everybody pays the same, there's many discussions when it comes to assessments as to if it's equally applied.
Sure.
And so I'm just saying that we agree, that's why, looking at the classification study, if we eliminate one classification, does that meet what we're saying right now? Everybody is going to share, but let's make it equitable in that it's based upon what we know to be true, and I think that Dustin can answer that question for us. From the standpoint of being a contributor taxpayer, I want to know that it is well-informed and that is driven by an equitable approach, and most people will accept that. It's difficult when you have additional expenses and you're struggling, anything, whether it's equitable or not, it's going to be a problem.
Absolutely.
But our task is to do what we feel is fair and equitable based upon good information.
Yep. Yeah, and just one other comment, just kind of in Brady's defense, is, yes, you want to do that, but you also want to do it in a way that it isn't so complex, that the operational cost to sustain it and every year reanalyze it, to look at, has that shifted, is part of the equation as well, I think. But that's probably just my opinion and not really what you needed to hear from me, so...
Well, this is, what we're talking about is building a facility that will allow Cook County residents to not dump their trash into the woods, one, and two, the option of carrying it down the road out of state is going to go away. Those landfills, those sites are closing, and we have no options, we have no options except either dumping it into the woods, well, I suppose we could put it on a barge and dump it in the lake, but those are not feasible. But it's like roads, we all pay for roads. Even the vacant property, you can't get to the vacant property without roads. So, that's just an across-the-board thing. We are all paying for roads on our acreage, I believe, so that, nobody wants to have special assessments, but nobody wants, we have to be responsible for the trash, and we have to be responsible for the trash that is generated by our tourist industry, by the people that come up, just come to Grand Marais, they go to the Boundary Waters, they're just up here for a weekend. We generate trash, and this is our county, our home, and we are responsible in so many, on so many levels for keeping it clean and safe, as in a health situation. I know it's really fun to take long walks in the vacant lands and come across old piles of old garbage that had been dumped, and sometimes you get a really cool bottle or something, but that's not a way to go anymore. So, I think it should be, and I'm a person, I mean, our house, we own vacant land, and I'm not too excited, because I have to really make an effort to get to the end of that vacant But I understand the need as part of a community, if I can afford to own vacant land, and I have a responsibility to the community to help keep the entire area, the entire community clean, safe, so...
Commissioner Sullivan?
I would really agree 100% with Commissioner White. This is a responsibility all of us have, and for those of us that have vacant land and have that luxury, we should be contributing. I agree with the analogy with roads, this is infrastructure that is really important to the entire county. People who are using the transfer station, if, let's say, they have a weekly pickup, I happen to have one, I'm going to pay for that use as well. But in terms of the infrastructure, I think it's critical that we all contribute. And I frankly, Assessor Thompson, really liked the work that you did by classification and looking at a model that is very usable from year to year, and I appreciate your efforts creating that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Mills?
Yeah, I really, I agree, I agree. I, and I am intrigued by the fee versus the assessment, because that is, I agree that it's, that would be the most accurate, equitable way to do it. One of the, one of the things that I know solid waste has challenges with is disincentivizing people to just dump their trash on land, and you want to make it easy for them to dispose of it responsibly, and so if there is an assessment already versus having an additional fee when the trash is dumped, I think that would work in that direction more so. And so I just want us to keep that in mind, if we are going down the road of a fee, or a melding of fees and assessments, but it seems like that assessment, just for that basic infrastructure, is what should happen, and I, I'll still be thinking about the fee, because that's, wasn't at the front of mind, so...
Commissioner Campbell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree with the, dealing with the challenges of, if it's fee-based, we have a way of avoiding it. If it's assessment, we don't have a way of avoiding it. And knowing, you know, what's what, how many businesses in town have dumpsters that find stuff in there that really isn't theirs, because people are trying to avoid the fee. And so I think, you know, we need to be aware of that. I would ask, Rena, I had posed the question yesterday, you know, to Dustin relative to a fee structure, was there any opportunity in the short term to be able to even look at that?
What was the, what was the question? I'm sorry.
Okay. Well, I just said, I'd asked him if there was, if we were to look at it from a free, a fee structure, meaning that you pay if you use it, if we could fund it through that, and it's a question for, you know, Brady, and relative to how that would have to function if, if the organization's collecting a fee, and then a portion of that, whatever percentage is determined, has to be given to us that we use to pay. So it has to be a provision of statute or policy that allows us to do it, but the question was, if we were to do it as a fee basis, so you pay it if you use it, how would we do that to meet the annual debt? And how would that impact our fee structure relative to competitiveness? And my feeling was, if we're still sort of within a ballpark, and we could do it through a fee structure, that seems to be the fairest way to do it, other than what Commissioner Mills brought up relative to people avoiding the fee by just putting it in the woods. But, so I'm just wondering if Dustin brought that to your attention?
He did not, but off the top of my head, just kind of looking at it from having been in that seat and this seat, the problem, I think, with that is that it's unpredictable. You know, if you do an assessment, you know what the amount is, and you have it, and so you don't, if it falls short that year, whatever, you're not going to have to, like, make up the difference in the levy.
Yeah.
So, that's, I'm always low-risk, always. So the lowest risk, in my opinion, is to assess for the amount you need, so you make that payment, and you don't have to find it somewhere else.
Yeah.
I think there's a lot of complication in the fees in terms of what the business would have to keep track of, and the complexity of the contract that would be between, between the county and North Shore Waste to manage that.
Yeah.
So, in a way, you're avoiding the county, I'm just going to say it, being the villain here, that's charging people more on their taxes, but you're putting that, it's got to be paid for somewhere. So it ends up being North Shore Waste that, every time somebody brings their garbage in, or doesn't, dumps more instead into the, into the, because now it's become too expensive on a weekly basis, people see that more than they see that one-time thing on their taxes. So then, the people in town or the campground ends up getting more garbage in their dumpsters, and then those people are paying a higher proportion because they have more trash, and their part is by volume. So to me, the fee thing has, is kind of wrought with a lot of unknowns and risk, where the other one is more known, but that's entirely my opinion on that situation.
Okay. If I could, just as a follow-up to that, that, I agree with that, I think that what we're doing is attempting to put everything out on the table and say, here's ways we could fund it.
Right, absolutely.
And then evaluating those, which you always do a good job of looking at things, and I appreciate that. I think from the, again, the public, we're here to serve their best interests, and by evaluating all these things, here's the pluses, minus, just like in our workshop, we said, let's, let's look at the pros and cons.
Yeah, I mean, the fee would put it on the users, but it would also put it more, or maybe disproportionately, on people who end up getting stuff dumped in their dumpsters, including the city, including the county. But, you know, on the, on the other hand, that vacant land that's vacant today, we've seen it the last few years, might not be vacant tomorrow. People are building more and more up here, and we have a lot of economic growth, and so having the expectation, I have vacant land as well, that I'm going to pay for each of those parcels, I think is fair, you know, because even when you have a piece of vacant land, sometimes you put a, you put a trailer on it, or you camp on it, or you're up here visiting while you're planning what you're going to do with your land, so you're still generating trash in general, on many of those pieces of vacant land.
It probably makes more sense with, you know, in a more developed area, where you have service that's covering more people and so you can have more, again, more stability, more knowledge of what's going to happen with it. But one other fact, not a big factor, I don't think, but the bonding would change. Two, if we use fees, collecting from a private entity, then we wouldn't have tax-free bonds, so that would affect that also.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Commissioner Mike?
Well, and this is not just a place to bring your trash, this facility is much bigger than that. We're talking about a recycling option for recycling... We're talking about a recycling option for recycling. We're talking about refuse, about creating compost from this area. And then, if we have this facility, and I believe this is still an ongoing discussion, we have an existing, I don't even, can't think of it, we have a facility that takes in recycling, and so there's still garbage, but what is the cost going to be for fixing that building, which has issues of its own, to make that more efficient? And so, if the county, we're investing, we are, we have to invest to help this whole community with our recycling, with trash. Should we then have two buildings, North Shore Waste with their newly designed, efficient means of operation, to do with all of that, and then still keep our existing recycling center? Or may, and so, the money that we now put into the recycling center, maybe that would offset the cost for the new facility. I believe we have a lot more to talk about, but it needs, it is infrastructure, it is a requirement to have a safe community, and this is what we need to have. We have no other options, except to do it ourselves. So, we all need to get over it. We have to do it, unless we, I don't know, live off the land, don't write a note, I don't, create no trash at all whatsoever, and that's not, not going to happen.
Well, in the West End, we did have a fee increase for the small and the large bag, and you just take it into consideration, you know, that's just what we do, and nobody, far as I know, complains too much about the bags of trash that goes in the large container, everything else is recycled. So, you know, I see the fact that this discussion, I brought it up first, we also had to talk about what type of facility we want to have, but I thought it was important, since Bob had put all these facts together about the prices and what, and where we're going to go with that, but that can be reviewed, you know, in another year, just as we all have reviewed all of our fees. Once a year, we look at different departments, so it is not set in stone. So, I mean, it's, I think we're going to have to agree on something to start with, and then, you know, over a period of time, review what's actually happening out there in the, in the real world of the waste.
Commissioner Mills?
Thank you, Chair. But what is, what would personal property be on?
So, I think all of those are the hangars up at the airport.
Okay, thank you.
There are some utility parcels that are considered personal property, the transmission lines are on personal property records, but I've moved those into the utility category.
And there's a fair amount of talk, there's a lot of talk at YMC about utilities and their value assessment, and are we, I feel like we're, by and large, insulated from that, but is this going to increase our liability there, or do we?
So, we have 33 taxable utility parcels, so, you know, 33, if it's a single fee, 33 times, it's, I don't know how many splits and combinations we get in a year, but I mean, it's a small number, it's a drop in the bucket compared to probably what some counties may have in the public utility parcels.
Yeah.
Commissioner Gammel?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think it's important to communicate, I mean, in the process, obviously, that we've done our due diligence, and that we've, you know, worked hard to make this as fair and equitable as we can to solve a real need. The perspective, I think, to keep in mind as a taxpayer, is that the Cedar Grove Business Park, right now, Grand Marais is contributing $60,000 to retire that debt, and the county's contributing $60,000, which is $120,000. That debt is scheduled to be retired by 2031. When I, in my previous term as a commissioner, and we were talking about how potentially to reduce levy impact in our budget, it was suggested maybe some of the revenues from sales or whatever could be applied to reduce levy. However, the city administrator communicated that they're setting that money aside, hopefully to pay the debt down prior to the 2031 due date. Why does this matter? It means that sometime between now and then, up to six years, that that $60,000 in Grand Marais translates to $17 per $100,000 on a home. And if we have a median price of a home of $415,000, you take that $17 to retire the debt on the business park, times per hundred, times your price of your home, and you'll come up with the figure. This is what you are paying right now to retire the debt on the business park, which could go away five or six years, so hopefully, then, that's done. If you live as a resident in Cook County, you are contributing $2 per $100,000 towards retiring the debt. And if you're a Grand Marais resident, you're going to pay the 17 per $100,000, plus the two for the county, because we got $120,000. So, that's $19 per $100,000 that we're paying right now to retire debt on the business park, which, in fact, was sold as that if we build it, we'll sell the lots, we'll retire it and pay the debt off, and it won't impact the citizen. That is not what happened. And here we are right now with a debt that is continuing to potentially 2031, and we have one lot yet to sell, to my understanding, based upon the website. One lot is not going to recoup and pay off that debt. Citizens have been paying that at $120,000 a year. But be mindful, that if debt goes away, those are dollars that are being expended right now that could be diverted. The other thing to be mindful of is that the YMCA, which is the debt on that's being retired with a 1%, and in talking to Brady, that the way that that agreement was drafted, that 1% once the debt has retired on the YMCA, which could be, Brady, what do you project?
Uh, next year.
Okay. That that 1% money under the way it's been drafted can be designated. Now, Commissioners, prior to my coming on board, had built that into the Ellers' projections, that they would use that 1%, which is about 2.5 million, that could be designated. But that's another pool of money, understanding as a taxpayer, about 80% of that comes from our tourism visitors, and 20% is being paid at the local level. But these are funds that we have, that we allocate based upon priority. The other thing to be mindful of is that if you look at the recycle center, the recycle center in your 2025 budget has a decrease in revenue of 27% and an increase in expenses of 6%. The 6% increase doesn't look too bad on the one end, but a 27% reduction, you're going the wrong way with two figures. So, what that ends up being is that, and our revenue generated in the 2025 budget is 21.5%. 21.5% of the total expense for recycling center is generated through revenue. The rest of it is 78.49%, is paid for by taxes in the levy. That means if you look at that, that if you have a $415,000 home, which is the median price in Cook County, you're paying $14 in your levy to pay that loss. That means if we incorporate into the transfer station, the recycling, that that fee that we're paying right now, $14, is going to go away. If you have a house more expensive or less expensive, we can figure the numbers, but I think when we do our recommendations, this is information we should provide so that you see, you take whatever we have that we're paying right now, it's not an add-on, it'll reduce the exposure based upon the assessment for the transfer station.
Commissioner White?
And we're also considering in this project, transfer station on the east end of the county, and upgrading the transfer station on the west end, which will make it easier for residents and non-residents to not only take their recycling, but also their trash, not have to drive into town to do it. So, that is, actually, I got accolades at the Hovland Post Office, someone thought that was a great idea. It's the meeting place, it seems, in Hovland these days. So, anyway, we're not just building a building to put our trash in and haul it out of the county. It is much more complicated than that, and it's much more to be proud of, of what we're trying to do, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Gammel?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just one other point I should have made, if you take right now retiring the debt on the Cedar Grove Business Park, as a resident of Grand Marais and Cook County contributing at that $17 per $100,000, we're, a person with a home that's valued at approximately 300 is going to pay just about 50 bucks. That's what they're paying right now.
Okay. Well, thank you on giving us a refresher course on where we're at with some of the debt. We'll always have a certain amount of debt, and we always have to think about when we do the levy, take into consideration. So many of the points that equal a fair and equitable levy to keep our county in good form and everybody taken care of. Any other comments from Rena, that you have heard our conversation here?
No, unless you have questions for me.
Okay. Commissioner Mills?
I'll stay here, though, in case, it's easier.
Please, please. And so, for today, to what degree do we need to make decisions? I feel like we need to make a decision on which design we'd like. Do we also need to make a decision on the structure of funding at this point, or can we have a general understanding of it? Or to what degree do we need that assessment figured out? And maybe Brady can help with that, as far as?
Well, we'll need to know what we're going to bond. I think we want Ellers here, again, before we, the timing and the amount and et cetera, that has to be, that's key to our, what we're going to assess.
Okay.
I think it's important, we have a time factor here, too, in terms of permitting and so forth, so maybe today with a discussion of the fees, and maybe get to a decision on what type of building, then the next meeting, we'll need to have Ellers and make our final decision then. Commissioner White?
Do we have to wait till the next meeting? Because I got the sense that timing is really, really important, so if we needed to have a special meeting, like next week, Friday, whatever, I think it's worth our time to get this project rolling.
Right.
And now, even more importantly, in light of, and I don't know if has any impact on this project, of what's going on on the federal level with dollars, so.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I think in addition to getting the permitting going, you know, being able to know for sure that we have a path here, so they can finish the plans, get it in for that, but also being able to put things out to bid, so we can get on the summer schedule, is the only way. We're going to meet the timelines of the other $3.4 million that we have. And the other issue that I'm concerned about, actually, is an understanding that we're probably going to be facing some tariffs, which could affect steel, and getting things ordered before those go in place would help us get more current prices, rather than the ones that might be potentially higher, which would blow this whole thing up. So, I do think time is of the essence. We've certainly been talking about this, I know, since last, I don't know, October, November, going to this path, and I know we thought we would be able to have this information by December, but the addition of looking at recycling kind of extended that for us. So, from where I sit, it would be most helpful if we could know, you know, really have a decision today. And at the very worst, maybe a special meeting next week, because there really, there really are a lot of critical time factors here that will impact the long-term pricing of this, and maybe even jeopardize some of our funds that we've already secured from the state. So, that's my opinion.
Commissioner Sullivan?
I would ask if we could have the spreadsheet that Assessor Thompson created put up on the screen again for our review. Thank you.
Madam Chair, and I do think that the most pertinent time deadline was that if we were going to collect in '25, Brady's got to have his statements out by the end of February, right?
The statements have to be out by the end of March, but we're entering, we have to have all the assessments entered in February, so.
Commissioner Gammel?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was going to ask Rena, what would you like to leave the room with today? I think you sort of touched on it, and I think the discussions we've had, we're well aware of, we've got money that through resourcefulness you've generated, which is huge, and you've got encouragement from organizations that you've worked with that are partnering with us to try to see this happen, which is important, I think, for the public, and it's important to know that this is a project, if it hasn't been communicated previously, it certainly has been stated many times, that this whole effort has been something that's been going on for at least a couple of years, and there's been a lot of work that's done in that, coming in on it and listening to the presentations and discussions, I applaud you, but I have that experience, previously as a Commissioner, when you were Head of IT, that you work hard at providing information so that people can be comfortable. We don't necessarily like what it's telling us, but the information is there for us to understand, so that there's been integrity in this process and a willingness to do what you can and answer the questions, which I appreciate. I think that as a board, if the board is comfortable, that we should be able to make a decision on which type of facility, so you can move forward with that. I think the decision relative to the, how we do the assessment, we might, we might want to affirm a concept, but get final numbers and see how that translates through Ellers, so that we make sure all figures are current before we affirm something. But I would be willing, if the board wants to have additional discussion, to see the board make a motion to be able to support the type of structure that we'd like to move forward. The other thing that'd be interesting, it's more work, but there was a commitment to try to use local construction wherever we could, and this is always something we're talking about. There are reasons why it doesn't necessarily work. It would be interesting to demonstrate, just so we understand, if that value local instruction, construction, and providers is important to us, the difference between that and having an outside company come in and do the whole thing, how that reflects on timeline, how that reflects on cost. Providing that information shows us, this value comes to us at this cost.
Right.
I would, that's more work, but it, I think it would be good to see that.
So, it's very important to Dustin, that we use as many local contractors as possible. Obviously, there are some parts of this that, you know, like precast, if that's what you chose, or putting up that metal structure, that require a certain level of construction that I don't think we have in the county, but things like groundwork, septic systems, wells, electrical, plumbing, those all can be done, and I know that he's advised the construction manager that they, that they should be able to bid on those. In terms of the two satellite transfer stations we talked about, the one in Hovland and the one in Tofti, all of Dustin's bids that he presented to you last week, all came from local contractors. So, you're right. I mean, it cuts the cost, because you don't have people up here staying in hotels, and where we can do it, I think it's really important to do that. Those contractors, though, where they might not always ask for it, will have to be paid. though, where they might not always ask for it, will have to be paid prevailing wage, because that's the terms of the funding that we have. But, yeah, no, that conversation has already been had. And I know quite a few of our local contractors are already aware that those bids are going to be out there. So, did that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay. And certainly, when we spend our money in the community, that money comes back to the community.
Yeah. It's a good value. We just need to know at what cost that is, because we hear it.
Right.
You know, let's use local contractors. And I think that's... It's a good thing. It's very healthy for a community, and it builds a relationship.
Right. I absolutely agree with you. And we need to keep as much money here as we can, because it comes back. It gets spent in our stores, and in other infrastructure, and in the tax base, even. So, I totally agree with you, and I know that Dustin does as well.
Thank you, Rena.
So, we've had a good review of some of the fees, which can be maneuvered around, as Bob said. Anybody ready to go and talk about the actual building itself? Commissioner Sullivan?
That's precisely what I would like to do. Thank you, Commissioner Starley. As I have reviewed all the documents, all of the bids, including the local bids that were provided to us in our packet, and through conversations I've had with constituents, there's a lot of support for not only the transfer station, but for something in the east and the west ends, to accommodate our community. And as I review this, and have spoken to people, getting something that will last, looking at that pre-cast concrete seems to be a wise use of our dollars. And I'm interested in hearing from other commissioners how they feel about the three buildings that I'm talking about, and then also the type of building, the pre-cast for the transfer station.
Looking at the difference, really, there isn't a whole lot of difference between the two. So, I think for longevity, whether it's 100 years, 75 years, the longevity is an important thing for us to consider. How do the rest of you feel? Commissioner Mills?
Yeah, I think feel similar to Commissioner Sullivan, just that those satellite facilities are extremely important for the communities on either end. And then, yeah, I think the difference was around 500,000. And if that buys another 50 years in a building, that's money well spent. Maybe it wouldn't be that full span, but I think aiming for that would be, that makes the most sense financially. And just, I think it's important that we also consider the metal, and looking at the pros and cons of that. But just looking at those differences, and then the cost difference versus the lifespan, it seems like that's the way to go, is with that pre-cast concrete, so.
Commissioner White?
Well, and we need to... Not everybody might even know what we're talking about. But when we had at the committee of the whole, we had a thorough discussion, big discussion, on whether it should be pre-cast concrete, or if it should be a metal building. And the... what can happen with metal buildings if you hit it, as opposed to what happens to your vehicle when you hit a concrete building. So, we're trying to do the best... Make the best decisions for our taxpayers' dollars to have a facility that will last as long as possible, most efficiently. And so, we're not saddled with some white elephant like we have with the YMCA. So, let's all remember and be aware. So, this... It's going to cost money, but it costs... You can't have cheap and good at the same time, necessarily. So, I'm in favor of the concrete.
Commissioner Campbell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In our workshop, we discussed and had presented and looked at blueprint drawings, and were able to ask questions relative to the layout, how you arrived at your recommendation. And I, coming in as a new commissioner, Rena, had a one-on-one presentation in that regard, too. And it was evident that thought was put into it, and that things that were learned along the way helped drive the direction of the final presentation. And I think, well, when we were in that workshop, we recommended, asked, requested, that they would send us the pros and cons relative to each of the buildings, which they did, thank you, so that we could simplify our understanding of what are the advantages, disadvantages. And I think when you look at the difference in the money, as Commissioner Mills referenced, the 500,000. 500,000 is significant money, but understanding the difference in costs, which is ultimately what we're looking at with a short-term or a long-term investment, and the maintenance cost and durability, those are huge issues. So, I think from the industry, you can learn, looking at those pros and cons, to help inform your decision. And I certainly would support the concrete structure for multiple reasons. And I think it'd be good if we, as commissioners, when we finally know where we're going and what we're doing in this regard, that we partnership with Dustin, Rena, and the providers, to put together information that helps us understand why the decision, so that they can benefit from what we benefited from, as commissioners, going through this process and being informed.
Thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
Thank you, Commissioner Starley. As we look at the waste management services that we're talking about today for Cook County, we have to realize that this transfer station has the potential to do so much for our county. It's going to cover our residents, our visitors, state and national parks, our campgrounds, waste collection for all our businesses, as well as households. And it will help our construction industry, giving us an opportunity to have a place for demolition materials. Right now, we've had the MPCA involved, and time is of the essence. They are supportive of us moving forward with this. It's really important. It gives us a chance to do something for our environment. Having an indoor facility is going to reduce or eliminate the risk of pollutants becoming airborne or leaching into our groundwater. It's going to protect Lake Superior from forever chemicals, which are in the news every day. And it creates operational efficiencies, which are going to help us from now into the future. So, based on that, I'd like to make a motion that we move forward with the concrete cast transfer facility, and the satellite facilities as planned on... in Hovland and in Tofti. And do that with a predictable, manageable plan, which means that we look at classification as the method to do that. I think today, to reach those dollar amounts for different categories of classification, might be challenging. We can do that with a special meeting, maybe next week. But I would like to make that motion.
Okay. So, I have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any further comments or questions? Commissioner Mills?
I'm supportive. I just would like to know more about if a special meeting is necessary for figuring out the further classification. Again, very willing if it is. If we can hold off until our next regular business meeting, I see efficiency there.
So, I think we need to make sure that you know how you're going to secure the money. You know, is it going to be by bond? You know, is it a solid waste bond, or is it a geo-bond, or...
It's not a geo-bond.
I mean, I think, probably solid waste bond. So, I think there's, you know, once you make a decision, things can start being ordered. Until you make that last-money decision, we can't, you know? So, that's... I mean, putting... This is... What you're about to decide is very important. But I just need... I need you to understand the constraints, the time constraints that you're putting on by delaying the monetary decision. Because until that's actually decided, no one is comfortable ordering pre-cast for a building that size.
Okay.
Right? So, at least I wouldn't be.
Commissioner Sullivan?
So, if we could have that spreadsheet put up again. Apologize. I like your work, Cesar Thompson. I personally am very comfortable with what I see here in terms of the annual fees. I believe it's something that we can adjust. As a property is developed, it can be changed. So, given that, I would like to amend my motion to include these particular fees. And Commissioner White, do you agree with that amendment?
So, we're looking at 4280 is-
Correct.
Yeah.
We're not. I think we're going to address that.
Ron? I'm sorry. Yes.
Yeah. Excuse me. Bob, can you provide some insight, or maybe even adjust the numbers here? The motion that was made was to include the pre-cast, which was...
Right.
...had a project funding gap of 5.3... 5,367,067, as well as the two satellite transfer stations, which had respectively a 280... 280, 280,000 and 280, as well as a 243,401 cost associated with them, for a total funding gap of 5 point... or 5,883,748. So, based on the motion, that's the funding gap, based on the numbers that we received from the Cal. And if I'm understanding it correctly, that's the number that we would want to put forward through the spreadsheet to have addressed, to see the fees.
Yeah. When LRS came up with that number, 383, that was based on a total cost of the facility of 5.2 million. And then, two... Over two of that is already covered. So, this is a bigger number. They haven't done an analysis on what we saw last week.
Right.
They haven't switched that. So, the fees are going to be higher than what we're seeing now, likely. But although they built room in that analysis, it actually covered more than the bond payment. So, they built room into that, but even so, it's going to be, I believe it'll be larger than that. But the second point is, it was, let's say, preferable to start fees this year, but it's not necessary. If you issue bonds, you know, in the spring, we're not going to make a payment until 2026. So, we'll be... If we don't get the fees in this year, we will be generating them in the year of our first payment. So, it's not... It's not critical. It was something I put out as, yeah, if we could get all this done, it'd be nice to start the fees this year. But it's not required, for sure. And they can also put off... They can do things like interest-only. We've done that on many bonds. It's not preferable to do that. But we literally will not have a payment until 2026. And then, we'll be collecting the money in May of '26. So, we'll just be behind by one interest payment.
So, we have a motion on the floor that's been amended-
Yeah.
-by Commissioner White. Any other discussion on that? Commissioner Campbell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to make... I mean, I think the language was specific to the figures that we see. And respectfully, I'd say, I think it's premature to lock into a figure. I think we can make a motion, if you're acceptable to a friendly amendment, that we support the concept, but the finals need to be defined by what LRS tells us with current numbers, and then those numbers get plugged in. And now, we know... But if we lock into something now, we have a motion that we're going to have to go back and deal with. So, I would say that we... If Rena, if this would help you in what you need to do from a timeline standpoint, and Brady, that if our amendment is to approve the concrete structure, and the classification methodology and assessment, subject to final numbers.
Okay. So, Commissioner Sullivan, can you repeat your motion to amend the fee?
So, the amendment would be to consider... Not consider, but to go with the predictable and manageable use of classification as the method for payment.
Subject to the final LRS numbers.
Right. Right. To wait until we have that-
Right. And we can get that through Brady and LRS.
Okay. Now, any more comments or questions? Commissioner Mills?
Do you feel comfortable? Like, I heard you saying you're not comfortable until we have the final, final. But listening to Brady, I was hoping-
Well, I guess I thought that that's what we were going to see in the spreadsheet today. So, I was a little surprised to see that older number. And I want to be clear, you can make a decision to move forward, which is in good faith, I understand that. But no other work is going to move forward until you make the decision about bonding. It just can't. Because if that is subject to seeing, you know, those final numbers, again, nobody can order off of that. Nobody can prepare... Start preparing bids for that. No one can do that. So, time is still of the essence for that final decision. And if you can't make that today, I'd highly recommend the idea of a special meeting in the near term, as soon as LRS can get those numbers. Because your next meeting isn't until the middle of February. And that's starting to really push the construction season in a very bad way, and also ordering. So-
Yeah, I just don't understand why we can't proceed, because we know we have the money. We know we're going to be collecting the money.
But you haven't decided... I mean, what I heard Commissioner Campbell say was, we'll make this decision, and then, you know, based on what the finer lumbers from LRS, we may modify that. That's what I heard him say?
That's the fee structure, but...
The fee structure.
Is that just for the fee structure, or is that...
That's only the fee structure. In other words, I don't think we...
Okay. All right. I thought that-
Without... I'm sure, I don't think we can approve a number that we lock into without actually knowing our cost.
Okay. Yes.
So, what we're saying is, we approved by the motion, that the... What's been presented to us is the concept, is what we agreed to. We just need to make that final number, based upon our LRS.
I misunderstood. I'm sorry. I thought what you were saying was, you may change what you're proposing, based on that.
No. I think everybody is in agreement, that we like the concept. It's just that final number, we don't want to agree to a locked-in number, without knowing our final cost.
Right.
And my only hesitation there is just looking at, you know, if it's going to be the same rate for vacant versus residential, and that sort of thing. But the final, big number, I think we're all on the same page of. And I'm not going to drag it out if the rest of the board feels like we should just use those equal numbers, if that's the way to make it simple and easy, or whatever. But I just think that we... There might be good reason to look at the differences between the classifications.
Sure.
Is the only further discussion I would need there, so.
I would just say, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
That's why we're talking.
Yeah.
You've got a foot that's been hobbled, so you're distracted.
I just want to note that I did not land on my head, so, this time. But, yeah, no, I still think, though, sooner is better. But we can certainly start getting people to prepare information that they need to send to do the orders, so.
Madam Chair, I would just ask Brady, if, when do you think LRS can get those revised numbers?
Well, I think you sent them all that information last week. So, I'm communicating with them right now. So, maybe I'll have it before the end of the meeting.
Okay. So, we've had a motion, which was amended. Is there any further discussion, comments?
Madam Chair?
Gary? Commissioner... Oh.
I would just ask, if we've got that clear in the minutes, what that motion is. Thank you.
Okay, good. Bob?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, if we can just pull up the spreadsheet once, one last time. So, if you're making this motion on the structure of it, the way I would define that is, if we're looking at, you know, this first column, which is still based off the old LRS number, the way that's broken out is that, you know, apartments, resorts, commercial and commercial bare land are double the fee of any other property, taxable property. I also just wanted to point out, you know, I know Brady said that they had kind of projected a 5.2 million in that 383 first-year collection. I looked at their spreadsheet, which is only in a PDF format, so unfortunately, I can't manipulate it. But it- But it anticipates growth in both the numbers of properties at a percentage, three tenths of a percent, and then also the amount collected as a 2% increase each year. So there's too many factors for me to just punch it into a spreadsheet right at the moment unless I had Ellers. But this column that I've highlighted would anticipate a 30% increase over those old numbers, and this is what the fee structure would break out to be. So I mean, we're talking a difference of $13 on the residential properties. So just wanted to clarify that. It can still be motioned today to set it up this way, and the numbers are just figured based on the final funded number.
Okay. Thank you on that. Commissioner Gamble?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Bob, I would just ask, is Ellers' projections that they're using reflect what you know to be true from the standpoint of that growth and whatever?
Yes. I think for the most part, I mean, it's showing, I think, a projected increase of 25 residential units. So, you know, go back to, those numbers were based off how many residential structures are there in the county, and they projected a growth of 25 residential structures. So that would be like houses, garages, even apartments, things like that. So I would say that at 25 a year, it's, and I think that increases slowly to about 27 on the 10th year. I think that's an accurate reflection of what we're seeing the last few years here for construction.
I just want to be sure that Ellers was using numbers based upon our reality, as much as we know reality, as opposed to an industry standard.
Yeah. No, and I do recall having a conversation with Bruce about that and what we're seeing in new construction growth. So they did do their homework on that.
Thank you.
Okay. One last time, any other comments or concerns before I ask for a vote? Okay? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Lots of good questions, because that's what we need to sort all these important things out for sure. Thank you, Rena, for being here, too.
Madam Chair, I'd like to thank the board very much for your attention and your diligence and understanding on all of this. And I'm wondering about the, will you plan to schedule a special meeting then? Or, I'm just wondering.
We'll see where we get back.
Or perhaps you might have that information actually before the end of the day. So I will hang around, because this is so much fun. So.
You really didn't have to go down the stairs for a sympathy vote. Thank you so much for your, doing your homework, and I appreciate the work that you and Dustin have done to shepherd this along and work with the county.
I really appreciate everything you guys have put into it. But I'll be back here if anything else comes up. Thanks.
All right. Very good. So we're going to move along to Highway, and Robbie has been waiting for his turn here.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Morning. Hopefully, these go a little bit faster. Two things in front of you. First one is an application for funding through the PROTECT program, and as Commissioner White is so fond of acronyms, this is the promoting resilient operations for transformative, efficient, and cost-saving transportation. Basically, an opportunity to provide climate resiliency to our infrastructure. And so the federal government, a couple of years ago, if you remember, passed the IIJA Infrastructure Bill. Several billions of dollars influxed into the country for funding. A portion of that goes to every single state, and so within the state or the districts, and so in our district, $420,000 was available. And so I submitted an application. Part of it is just getting a resolution of support from the board. And so the project in question is resurfacing the end 10 miles of the Gunflint Trail. $420,000 is a small part of that. As you're aware, the cost of infrastructure these days, but part of that is replacing a lot of culverts. And so these funds would go towards that. And so does anybody have any questions?
Commissioner White? Are these secured dollars, based on what I heard happening federally this morning?
Right. That is a wonderful question, and emails have been sent, and we will find out. I do know that the federal dollars we have secured for 2025 are secured, and so that's good. The big question is, is every single federal grant program going forward? So I would encourage you to please email your legislators and representatives and say how important infrastructure is to Cook County and how important federal money is to Cook County, because we need it. We can't do our, we can't do our projects without it. So more to come on that wonderful news.
Okay. Any other questions or comments for Robbie? Commissioner Sullivan?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion on behalf of the contractors, the residents, and the visitors to the end of the Gunflint Trail to approve the PROTECT funding resolution.
Support?
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. Next thing you'll see on there is something we've talked about the last couple of years. It's a way for us to really leverage kind of bulk purchasing, basically, if you think of the reason why we all go to Costco. This is basically that. And so what we've entered into the last couple of years is joint striping projects, pavement marking projects with St. Louis and Lake Counties. And what it is, is we basically pay an administrative fee to St. Louis County to administer the project. I send them information on what we want, what roads we want striped, for example, and they put the plans and the specs and everything together. They handle the contract with the contractor. And that's how both the upper half and the lower half of the Gunflint got done, got done the last couple of years. And so the proposal this year is to just do the rest of the county, get everything done. What's really nice is I didn't look at it for this, well, I don't have an estimate for this year's costs, but the last couple of years, we've been below state average bid price, unit price per foot of striping, and I think that's a pretty darn good deal, because we don't get that up here. And so the fact that we're able to leverage that's pretty awesome. So does anybody have any questions?
Okay. Commissioner Gamble?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had the opportunity, privilege, whatever, to attend the 101 Government with AMC this past week. And in my previous term as Commissioner, had attended some NACO conferences related to how you create resilient counties. And the discussion centers about the need for partnership and a willingness to do that. And so I applaud your efforts. From what I've heard, you're very diligent in trying to find money for us and as a county that provides a better environment for us, to be able to appreciate our roads and transportation, and it also reduces costs to our taxpayers. Those are both win-win situations. So again, I'd like to see more partnerships where we benefit from that. And they're tangible, and that we can look at the real numbers and see, and you made that in your comment when you said we're below, you know, what the average is. And whenever you can present something like that, it demonstrates good stewardship, so I appreciate that.
Appreciate it. Thanks.
I make a motion, then, Madam Chair, to support the Cook and St. Louis County Cooperative Striping Agreement.
And I'll second that motion.
Any further questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, everybody. Thanks.
Thank you.
Moving on to MIS, we need some laptop replacements.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Excuse me. Before you, we have a request per board policy, capital purchase over 5,000. We're looking to continue on with our regular replacement of Cook County staff laptops, a few special laptops, a MDC or mobile data computer, a ruggedized laptop used by our deputies, and then a little, little higher-quality laptop that has some, some higher specs needed by our highway engineers, as well as UPSs and universal power supplies, which protect our equipment from power outages, brownouts, voltage spikes, and such. The cost breakdown of all of those and our replacement schedule is included in the summary, but the request is to purchase those items, again, with budgeted funds, budgeted MIS capital funds, for a total of $70,100 to keep us on our regular replacement schedule of this equipment.
Comments or questions? Commissioner Gamble?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Rowan, not having been up to date on what informs our rotation on these things, but how do you, what's your perspective as to our rotation schedule being well-informed and the, you know, the justification, basically, for these things? When it comes to doing budgets and looking at where we have opportunities to maybe manage some things, from your expertise, you'd say maybe we could, you know, wait a year, we could change this or whatever else. And again, because I haven't been privy of conversations that have informed that, I'm just asking, you know?
Yeah. No, it's a great question. I appreciate it. Our schedule was actually set by my predecessor, who's in the room here today. But we had gone from a five-year replacement schedule to a three-year replacement schedule. And the background information there and the reasoning why is that is because of the failure rate and the staff downtime that we were seeing at five years. Just the accumulation and tracking of how many troubles we have when we get to a four- and five-year-old laptop, and the amount of downtime that the individual staff that own the laptop or use the laptop have, as well as the associated time for our staff to then, kind of, not in a structured way, but more in an emergency way, we have to come find your laptop, spin up a replacement, move your documents, all the associated work with that. And so based on what we've seen operationally in years past, the decision to move from a five-year to a three-year has panned out as a good one, and it's one that, in my role as director, I've looked to continue on with.
Madam Chair, as a follow-up, just when you're talking to your peers or whatever, do you know how that plays out in other counties as far as what they're doing in their rotation?
Yeah, very, very standard.
Yeah. Thank you. Appreciate the answer.
Any other comments or questions? I'll hear a motion.
So moved, Madam Chair?
I'll support.
Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. I'm thinking too far ahead. Auditor Brady?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this is the IRRR Revenue Bond Grant Contract. So we've been talking about this quite some time. $2 million of the grant is for the transfer station, and $250,000 is for the Harborview apartment. And this is the IRRB Grant Contract, and we've approved everything up to this point. In the contract, it's a standard IRRR contract. So they call for bids a little tighter than our state standards, so we have to fit all that, and we have to meet the fair wage standards, or prevailing wage requirements for construction of $25,000 or more, and so forth. Those are the main ones, and regular reporting, et cetera. So if we agree to all of their requirements, I'd ask you to approve the grant contract.
Commissioner Gamble?
Madam Chair, I should recuse myself from this decision.
Sure. Commissioner Sullivan?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the $2,250,000 grant contract agreement with IRRR, and authorize you and Auditor Powers to sign the agreement.
Support.
Any further comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes with one recuse. Thank you all. We'll take a 10-minute break, and maybe Brady will have some more information, and then we'll go into Commissioner Sullivan's request on assignments.
If there is something by statute because of funding or whatever that we need to participate, that pretty much answers it. But otherwise, pending that discussion, I think we'd have to look at what we want to do with the conflict that we have right now.
Right.
Your conflict relative to?
My budget this afternoon.
Yeah, and that's?
And on here, I just noticed that I don't have a listing for the extension. So we need to add that. I'm also. Cook County Extension? Yeah. You can just make a note, extra note. And the thing about that is that the state requires two of us to be there.
Yes.
That's statutory.
Instead of, you know, my being the primary and you would be the alternate, both of us have to be at the extension. Community Center is a little bit different.
Yeah, yeah.
If you look down near the bottom, you'll see U of M Extension Committee.
Oh, U of M? Okay.
Yeah, and I'll rename that.
That's fine.
Because I checked with Anna Klobuchar and it, I think it's the
Okay.
Cook County Community Extension Committee or something. So all, that's probably why
Okay.
you were maybe looking somewhere else. So I'll
Yeah, and the meeting times, yeah, meeting times are fluctuating. We're not meeting when it says here, so we'll just keep that open for whatever. Rather than put the times there, it's the, even the date gets moved around depending upon what the extension staff has going for them. So.
Madam Chair, can you, can somebody tell? I know what NA normally means. It's not applicable or not available or whatever. But in our application here, why are we putting that in there when we have somebody that? For instance, University of Minnesota Extension Committee, it says NA. Would it not show the other individual in that column?
Right.
As opposed to an NA? And that's where I guess I get confused when there is somebody else that's on that committee. It should show who the alternate or who the other participant is.
So would you like the, are you saying Commissioner Gamble, you'd like the primary person listed rather than NA if there is a primary or in the case of?
I would like to know who the alternate or primary or whoever is. So in the case of the U of M, when there's two, if it shows under your listing, then because I'm also on it, I think it's there. That way, when you look at it, you know the representation, if that makes sense.
Oh, sure.
Because an NA, to me, when I know there's another individual, is confusing. I think it should show whoever else is, whether they're alternate or primary, just show it.
Right.
That makes sense. That's my mind.
Yeah.
That's why we go over the list periodically, you know, to clarify all of that. So
So.
You're not able to go this afternoon?
No, because I'll be at the building. And when I look at it, I do have an orientation that I'm going to be doing with the chair relative to one of these two, and it's on my calendar. But I've, the building thing, given what's going on, I feel like I would like to be at that one.
So I'm scheduled for the budget.
Yeah, it's Budget and Facilities.
Budget and Facilities Advisory involves the Chair of the County Board
Yeah.
and one additional commissioner.
The other thing is that this is really the first time we've had a good packet from the community center info. And I think probably because we've had some interested people who want to join the council. So we could say, you know, for the next meeting, give us your minutes and all of that, and then we'll try to, you know, work something out. But basically, neither one of us are going to be available for the community center meeting.
And I had sent, with the hospital, we had that conflict. And at our last meeting, I just checked to see if anybody, the alternate, you know, would be available, and you weren't. And I wasn't because AMC, but I sent an email and explained why there wouldn't be representation, you know, at that past meeting.
Yeah, we did have some discussion on that. Stacy wasn't real sure about the real reason to attend the meetings.
I would, I would agree with that. In my past experience in attending, and you're there, and I feel awkward if I leave early, but then a lot of it isn't necessarily relative. I think some of these things can be communicated, and the benefit that gain can be there without the resource invested. And it's not to diminish the value of knowing, it just, I was surprised when I, the other commissioner was primary, and when I had to fill in, I thought, really? You know?
Should we consider, Madam Chair, reassigning people to the group this afternoon?
Reassigning somebody from here?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know about reassigning. We could get volunteers, whoever has time, but
Yeah.
not as maybe a permanent assignment.
I mean, if it's a matter of somebody wanting to go and tend, so we have representation, we could, we could do that. But I think we should do the evaluation to know what we're dealing with as opposed to making decisions without that assessment. On this particular one, we know we're going to participate. And if, if looking at the schedule to see where there's overlap and will be ongoing conflict, then I would agree that there needs to be an evaluation of that.
Commissioner Sullivan and I are already meeting, missing a meeting this morning. So, I mean, when groups set, not in particular, a meeting that would affect the board, but in the effect of a community, you know, I think we both indicated Tuesday mornings we can't go. And could you adjust with the other folks from other areas? Because it's optional to be a Zoom, you know? So we'll have to work on that, too, I guess.
So it gets to your point. If, if somebody wants to go, so we have representation. But I would say as far as any decision long term, I would wait till we step back and take a look in a broader scale.
Sure.
I thought, well, if I can make a half hour, it'd be like if, if it started earlier and the other one started, then I can make the half hour. But that's not the way it is. It's the other way.
If they started at one.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So we'll just leave it optional for right now and then evaluate when, when we maybe get their minutes to see what their meeting was about and, and then take it from there. It's great that they have these interested residents who want to be part of, of that board.
Yeah. Madam Chair, and Commissioner Sullivan and I were talking during the break as far as assignments, trying to create more structure. And I know when we would have our organizational meeting, it was, and who's going to notify who and what's going to happen and whatever. So maybe you want to speak to what we've been talking about in that regard to build, make it easier for everybody to understand this.
Absolutely. Chair Starlee, one of the things that Commissioner Gamble and I were talking about is the fact that as time has been spent researching all our committees and when they meet, we went through some files in the administrative office and found that there are some significant gaps in communicating with the county from these different groups as to when they're meeting, verifying their time, sending applications that they have received if they aren't ones that are on the county website. And so what I would suggest we do is for all five commissioners, as we go to our meetings over the next month, two months, three months, four months, so we're getting those quarterly meetings, that we make sure that we request that the bylaws of that group and any applications for community members be sent to Jana Cocumilla Burka so that we have accurate records on our county website. And those bylaws talk about whether we are voting members or not. They talk about frequency of meetings, whether it's a statutory requirement or a request to the county. But to have that clarification is really important. And I think the easiest and most manageable way to get that information is if we, as commissioners, request that information.
Commissioner Gamble?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I would add that whether it's included in the bylaws, sometimes mission statement is not. But we should, we should know what the intent, what the mission of that particular group is. Because if, if we come up with criteria that defines benefit to taxpayers, people we represent, we should be able to tie that to the mission to see how that supports why, why we attend and how it helps us. So we should have that
Bless you.
defined as, as well. And the other thing I'd recommend in, in putting this together, because there's so many more on here than previous when I was commissioner, is that if it's something that we all attend, that it either be bold faced or put all. So we know this, this is a committee or assignment that all of us attend. And that would just visually reinforce what we might be aware of if we did that. In other words, all commissioners, this is what we do. It's an emergency management, whatever.
So Commissioner Sullivan, the meeting that you'll be attending for WAST, will that be virtual as far as you know?
There will be in-person meetings and also testifying if the legislature involved with that.
So this continues through June, I understand, from their website?
Right.
So if there's some conflicts, we'll see what we can work out with you. And, but you'll, hopefully, I know Julie will be on top of everything.
There are.
The two chair will also, Chairman Johnson from Grand Rapids, and we'll, we'll have a program, shall we say, in the next few weeks. So you know what to expect. And then we'll know kind of what your obligations are.
Absolutely. And then one other consideration we may want to make is that I would likely be presenting or sharing information with our local Solid Waste Committee.
Okay. Okay. So just continuing on with the packet that we have from the Heart of the Continent, maybe Commissioner Sullivan can speak to that.
Absolutely. You'll recall that a few years ago, we discontinued making a yearly contribution to that group. It was $99. But the group had not met in a couple of years, and that was during COVID. Over the last year, they have gotten very organized. They had a great workshop up in Grand Portage last year. They're doing a lot that really does have very positive implications for Cook County. And to me, it seems like that is something we should be involved in. So my thought is that both with Heart of the Continent and Laurentian Divide, we could put those on a future agenda and have a discussion and vote to either approve or not approve financially participating in those groups.
I don't see in here where they have any immediate meetings coming up. Do you?
Not in that particular flyer. There's information on their website, and that's why I felt putting it on a future agenda would be appropriate.
True.
Commissioner Gamble, anything you'd like to say about the Laurentian group?
Thank you, Commissioner Sullivan. I, I did attend yesterday. Commissioner White had attended, and I contacted her, asked her if she was going to attend or not. I had been on that committee previously in my term. There were very beneficial things. We held a number of workshops on, on important things that, that affect the watershed. And so I felt that there, there was real benefit to that. Within the state, there were like four of those committees, some in the southern portion of the state as well as ours up here in the Arrowhead. And I do recall that many of those committees looked up to the Laurentian Committee up here. They wondered, how do we do it? Because funding is a challenge, and you create your funding through workshops and different things. And sometimes there's grants, and there were grants, monies that came from Enbridge. But all of those others have gone away. And so we're, we're the lone one. I think the criteria that we define as commissioners relative to benefit to the county is critical to understand participation. In attending yesterday, in the financial report, it shows dues paid. And when I questioned it, we haven't been paying dues for the last two or three years at least. And so I wanted to know if there was a conscious decision on the part of the board to say, we're withdrawing. And I know there was a committee that I sat on that I felt it was not beneficial. I felt leadership was poor. And there were issues at AMC with this particular committee, which I think they still brought them under their wing. And so we didn't, we no longer participated with them. And that's got to be based upon whatever criteria. So when it comes to the Laurentian, I would just like to, as you say, in a future discussion, I'd like to look at these relative to benefit. I have no recommendation. I was going to talk to Jim Hall, was on Soil and Water, and he attended. So he's been there many years. He's certainly has since retired. But just to ask him over his tenure, what has been the real benefit? And to the extent that we see benefit, like Heart of the Continent, if, if they're, if they're providing benefit or if they go away for a time or whatever, we just want to understand, is this good stewardship of our resource of time and money? And so I have no recommendation at this point without doing some research and then wanting to know. Their participation fee due is $400. So. So I just defer that to further discussion.
So any other comments on assignments right now?
Oh, yeah. I'm, I'm on the Department of Children, Youth and Families Interagency Committee, which is, you know, the new department that split off of DHS and Corrections and is taking on just kind of a spattering of different state agencies to try to focus more on, on children, youth and families. And so there are three commissioners on that. And quite a few staff on the county, on the county team. And then we meet with the state agency and the state staff. And, you know, it's, it's a new department, and so it's really just trying to keep up to speed with how things are rolling out and the, either the direct impacts or perceptions that counties are seeing and feeling throughout this transition, and just having those lines of communication and developing a healthy culture there. And I'd say, you know, it's probably the biggest lift I've had in the last year as far as committees are concerned. It's, I think there's two, two just county team meetings a month, and that's on Monday, every other Monday, and then two Wednesday meetings, which is with the state as well. And so previous discussions with the board here, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense necessarily to be compensated for all four of those each month. But I was hoping for one of them. And oftentimes, the per diem wouldn't even necessarily be relevant because there's other meetings the same day. And so it's just giving, giving some compensation and some flexibility there. But happy to defer that to, to further discussion again. But just wanted to put that on our radar again.
Okay. Anything else on assignments?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Brady, in the budget, when we did projection for costs for commissioners in, in attending events and things like that, per diems, we have sort of a handle on unless something new has cropped up when we're doing the budget process. The mileage issue is, is an issue that, looking at that, given how that's changed based upon the federal allowance, do you feel, I mean, it's, it's a moving target, so it's hard to say. But I just say, when you're doing budgets, you call and say, what do you think the government's going to do here? What do you think elector is going to do here? Then it helps to know if there's going to be increases in areas.
Yeah. And in this case, the, the bigger unknown is how many meetings you guys attend.
Yeah.
Because that's changed dramatically since COVID.
I know it.
And it's been slowly getting larger, but we're not, we're not up to the budget yet that we're actually budgeting for. So I feel good about this year.
Yeah. That's why I think we have to look at, it's not the number, it's what's, what's beneficial, what, what has substance that really matters, you know, in representation. The information that there, there might be ways of garnering that, being less expensive and more succinct.
Always a reevaluation, that's for sure. So Commissioner Gamble, from the days when we served, we had a set amount of committees, and then we went home and we worked on that. Today, a committee could go into two or three subcommittees. That's the power of what we're into now. It isn't just what we're assigned, basically.
Yeah.
Childcare came in. You know, cannabis came in. I mean, we could name, I don't know how many different categories that each of us then now takes into account for attending, you know? Because it's all important. It's like AMC, they're putting out a request for interested people on behavioral health. Well, I'm very interested in that because I represent NACO in health, and we talk about, you know, what's happening in our country and then in our county. And also, I'm thinking about that. I don't know what the commitment will be. But, you know, so it's like, we always evaluate, how important is this? And can I do it? You know? So that's the big difference between 2013 and now. Okay. Any other reviews or comments on assignments? Okay, great. Thanks for all of your input. So we'll move on to administrator updates.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will start with the hiring of the county administrator process. We received notification from DDA. As they had mentioned, they would look to take of our 41 applicants, advance 10 to 15. They found 12 of what they believe are the best candidates from our pool. And these 12 candidates, per the, the process for DDA, will take work personality index tests, complete an information disclosure, disclosure statement, which is geared to explain any negative press or resume gaps that, that they may have, they'd like to address. And then, of course, as we've discussed, the online video interview. And so they, the goal and the hope of, of DDA is that we, the board, can convene at a special meeting on Monday, February 3rd, which, as it would turn out, might tie in nicely to our discussion for the transfer station.
Yeah, Bruce has already said yes to Monday morning.
Very good.
So.
Seems to be a theme there.
Transfer. Yeah. So from there, what they're looking to do is to give the board access to all that information that I listed on the candidates, have you all review before our next regular board meeting on the 11th, and then have Pat from DDA be on the board meeting again on the 11th to go through how you viewed the resumes and the videos, and have you score the candidates. And something to note for, again, for you all is, was included in the, the email that I passed along from Pat, but for the public as well, would be referring to the candidates by number and not disclosing their name as it wouldn't be public yet at that time. With the goal, the larger goal in the process being, get the board's collective feel on the candidates to narrow down to five finalists that we've discussed previously and reserve that date, March 5th, for the final in-person round of interviews. So it would be review semifinalists in reference to, to numbers, not names, but also review and approve a process for the March 5th in-person interviews. Things that, that DDA would like us to consider and that we'll, we'll talk about. Consider reimbursement of applicants for interview expenses. Consider making available remote interviews. Consider options for showcasing and informing candidates about Cook County. Determine the interview day schedule. Interview panels and participants as well as lunch arrangements. And especially that last one, the, the panel and participants ties into a recommendation that I've shared both from the MAT team as well as our personnel committee to, as we've done in the past when hiring a county administrator, have the ability for department heads to provide direct input on the finalist candidates, on those in-person, on the finalist March 5th interviews, however we, the board decides to facilitate those. Moving on to the other updates that I have, LEC expansion and our, our work with BKV. We had a, the last round of meetings have us looking at a single-story option. And we're still on schedule for coming to the board, even with those changes, February 25th, with a recommendation on a, on a schematic and a design. And from there, it would be for the board to decide how we would like to do additional public information session if we would on that final design, if the board approves it, that schematic or not. Some of the highlights there that, again, just to, to share, this reduces the size of the, the building by about 1,800 square feet. Takes away the need for an elevator and some stairs and some other things going from a two-story to one story, which our facilities director, Brooke Bussard, tells me he's very happy about. But it does push the building farther north into that area, which we've, we've started to really dial in on the impact to parking, which I think is, is pretty minimal. I think we, we found some good, very low-cost solutions there. And, but it, it, going north is kind of that ledge rock and that, that incline that goes up to the highway department and the gas pumps. And so additional information that we'll get from when we do our, our core sampling will kind of inform what additional costs may be by going further north, blasting and such. So more to come on that. Another item I have to, to update on is the transfer station, but I think we're, we're up to date as we can be there. And, and then lastly, just kind of continued update on deferred maintenance, the capital improvement plan, as well as the southwest corner of the basement. DSGW showed Brooke and I kind of a finalized design that, that they're then sending on to a third party for pricing. And so once we have some numbers and a, a design to accommodate the office space and redesign the break room and some of the storage areas downstairs to accommodate staff to make more office space, we'll bring those numbers and designs forward for your consideration. But I expect to have that in the next few weeks as well. Those are the, are the big ones.
Okay. Any questions or comments for the administrator?
Madam Chair, Rowan, with regard to the process in, in hiring another county administrator, we've had some discussion. One question I have, well, do we have an outline that shows the progression of the discipline we're following in this process of hiring? In other words, it says, here's this. Now, you alluded to that they intended, they went through the, all the applicants, and then they said, here's the ones we recommend. Now, we are going to do whatever, to narrow it, well, 12 that we've recommended. And we will do, meaning the contractor, will do the interviews and ask them five questions and so forth. So when we look at this, when, and I, and I'm not saying because we did it before, Commissioner Starlee and myself involved in that process of hiring our first county administrator, we were going to hire a con, outside contractor to facilitate the process for us. And my recommendation is because this is new to us, we can be informed if we do this process and learn from it. And so we didn't bring a consultant in until we started, we knew what we wanted, we knew what we're going to do, and then we asked that they would start the list for the position. When the resident When the resumes came in, we had the opportunity to look at those resumes. We didn't have a criteria that said, when we do this video representation, that, as I understand it in reading the documentation now, that we will score them, was our number one, number two, whatever. We had various disciplines that you would score for each applicant. So, you had multiple numbers based upon those disciplines. You would accumulate the total of those, and that would tell you whether that was the number one. So, you might say, in the administrative side, this person looks like the five, maximum. This person over here looks like a two. When it comes to the interpersonal, then this person was a five, this person was a one. And so, you, it was accumulated to store, but the discipline of having to look at these different levels, it wasn't like we tried to do this overall, and this is my top candidate. Because top candidate might be driven by an emotional response, as something that affected you, as opposed to the discipline of having to assign and wait your decision and then speak to it. Why do you feel that way? And it allows for a refining process that brings more integrity into your final decision. The other thing is, the five questions that are asked, are those five questions questions that the board has put together? Or are they five questions based upon a profile that we gave them, that they came up with their questions? Do we know what the questions are that they're asking?
Yes. To the last, I would say that the six questions that DDA proposed was shared with the board chair, and collectively, we approved that, and those are the questions that DDA will then put through for our, the candidates. To the other questions about the process, the board, when we had the conversation previously about should the county go with an administrative form of government or not, the, collectively, the board decided unanimously, based on the other options and other considerations, that we did want to go, the board wanted to go with an administrative form of government. And at that meeting, they also decided unanimously that they would like to hire DDA and use DDA's process for that. And so, that's the process that we've been sticking to, but if, at any point, the board would like to make recommended changes or sees, has questions or concerns, my practice and process has, as we collect information from DDA, I provide the updates immediately to the board via email, and always ask, if you have questions or concerns, please reach out to me, and I'm more than happy to coordinate that and make suggestions on how we can improve the process to better meet what the board's looking for.
Madam Chair, thank you, Rowan. As part of the AMC, you know, government that I attended, one, there were two things in that agenda that I really was looking forward to, and one was county administrative form of government. And the other was a thing about just how, given the culture that we find ourselves in, how do we have conversations and work together? And it's part of why my participation in the Northern Counties Land Use Coordinating Board that I sat on previously, I looked so forward to, because we had people with different ideologies, different perspectives, but the mutual respect and regard for each other, and the willingness to work, and the willingness to defer to somebody that you might have a different ideology, but you agreed with the values that you were protecting, those were all healthy things, and it made it attractive to want to be there and participate because of that commitment. And so, when I look at this process, and I would say, and Rena can back this up, that when we unfortunately lost our first county administrator, the concern on the part of the MAT team, the staff, and Rena came to me and said, there's a concern that you're going to, the board's just going to move forward and hire too fast, and we're concerned about that. And my response was, that won't happen if I can influence direction, because we had spent so much time and energy in this process, transitioning from what we had to our county administrative form of governance. And you can see it from the human standpoint, there being an inclination to want to just say, oh, my goodness, do we have to do this over again? And so, that was the concern that I think that the MAT team was expressing. And so, we wanted to be sure, no, we cannot say we're weary, and we don't want to do this. We need to do and build into it the integrity that we did in the first place. I did speak with a commissioner who is from a county that we had invited in, three or four county administrators that were respected in our analysis as to whether to transition or not, and asked them, what is the expectation? What should we expect if we make this transition? What should we be looking for? The one county administrator who we interviewed, I asked, is he still there? And he said, no, he just retired. I said, what is the perception of his role in that particular position? He says, he is so highly respected and admired. What he brought to our county was structure and an environment where it was very evident what we, you know, would be doing would be effective, create a culture, create efficiencies. And his motto, basically, charged to employees, to the community, to everybody, that he consistently would say, if it's not ethical, moral, or in the confines of the provision of rule or law or policy, we should have nothing to do with it. And I've always maintained, whether it's budget negotiations or anything, we need to have, establish a set of values, just like we talked about with committee assignments. Do we have a set of values that defines when we will and when we'll not participate? It's a good discipline, because the emotions, especially in negotiations, things like that, can get out of hand, and it'll take you off what your focus should be. And so, my point is, is that I think in this process, what we have missed is we have missed public involvement, which should ask, what is the public's, you know, take on this? That informs our decision. And we, I personally would like this retired individual to be able to speak to the board, to understand what is the role and responsibility of a county administrator. We were not familiar with it. The individuals we've hired have not been in those positions. And so, we're sort of all wrestling and defining it, not necessarily based upon best practices. And when AMC, Julie, said, what could we focus on in the future? I said, we should focus on best practices, across the board. It is a disciplined and structured that helps us to understand, this is the way you do things. And at least knowing that, you can have a discussion and then determine whether or not you want to change, but it better be substantiated by things that justify that change. So, I would say that we're sort of abrogating some, abrogating some of our stewardship responsibility in this process to come to a conclusion that is in the best interest of the people that serve us as employees, as well as the constituents who put us in this position of stewardship responsibility. So, I'd like to have community input, and I would like to have, I know there's been some staff, you know, input, but if, let's just say, if I'm correct on this, we've got fifty percent participation? Fifty percent participation? We wrestled with this initially, because people are fearful of communicating, and even if they have misgivings, they won't say it, because they're coached to say, always leave the bridge, you know, and leave with a positive. And so, don't be honest about these things, that are things that we're responsible for making sure we correct, in the culture and the environment and in the administration of governance. And I, we worked very hard, and we talked about this, that we kept going back and going back, because we were trying to establish a trust relationship with employees, that they would trust us to be stewards of the information they provided that would inform our decisions. So, whether it's exit interviews, whether it's interviews on a particular issue, fifty percent is not acceptable. And that's on us, because the culture is such that people aren't willing to be straightforward. So, I would like to see us more involved. I would like to have seen all of the resumes. I would like the discussions and the responses that are coming from the people they contract to come to each commissioner in any hire with a recommendation, but we should be seen, because we've been elected to represent the best interests of constituents. And we don't do our due diligence when we just delegate that to a couple people to make that decision. That's my position.
So, Rowan, I appreciate you sending out all that information. I think we need to look it over again. Commissioner Gamble, we are learning a lot in what we look for expectations in the next administrator. I think that we have not the knowledge ourselves to do hiring on our own. That's why we've gone with David Draw Company, the last two administrators, and they've taught us a lot in terms of what they do for us. Now, we have great comments from the MAT team, from all of us, and I think that possibly once we get discussing this on Monday, maybe some other things will arise, but I have faith in this company to look and sift through all of these candidates, which we know are just people submitting their name, just for the fact they're submitting their name. They're not all going to be qualified, and that's why this company sees their qualifications and eliminates them down to what eventually we will have as five. And I think we are elected to make certain decisions, and one of these decisions is the hiring of people, and especially this particular position as administrator. And all of us met individually with David and brought up a lot of concerns, a lot of positives, and a lot of, this is how we, how I would like to have you look at a candidate. So, that's been a process that keeps developing. I don't want to see turnover, but unfortunately, we've had situations where we've had them. But I think each time we look at the position, we add more continuity and more concerns and more things to discuss. So, let's just look at what Minister Rowan has sent to us, come with questions on Monday, and maybe other things will develop when we discuss this. Commissioner White.
To Commissioner Gamble's statement about us getting information from a well-respected retired administrator, obviously, it's a different county, different sizes, different flavor, probably, but it is a job, a job. And if indeed this particular retired commissioner could maybe give us a little insight into things that, struggles that had been presented to him, or, and then solutions or pitfalls that we're not aware of, I would think we all know that there are people that interview really well, but it doesn't mean they can actually do the job really well. So, if I would be in favor of having just a phone call with this particular retired administrator to be able to get some insight from him, that's all. Not, because we still ultimately make the decision, and the more information we have, the better equipped we are to make a good decision for our people. Maybe he lived in a county where, I can't even come up with some sort of ridiculous scenario, but it wouldn't, it wouldn't hurt if we had one more little piece of information from someone who was well-respected, who did a job, and assuming that the people that were giving him accolades were not on a payroll someplace to do that, that we could maybe benefit from it. Only if it did not slow us down immensely, and so, come the time when school starts, Rowan's still sitting there, because we haven't made a decision.
Okay. I've heard your comments. I think we should discuss this, see if it's applicable on Monday.
Sure.
And I'd like to move on. So, we have a special letter that Commissioner Sullivan has received. Correct?
Yeah, which I just shared before.
In regards to Allison?
Oh, yes.
Yes. So, Allison, would you come forward?
So, we had a really good piece of news last week, and I would like to just compliment Allison and also Plaman for the incredible financial work that they have done with PHHS. We received a letter indicating a perfect, perfect reporting by our PHHS department. And I know, Allison, that it's not all your work, you have staff that are part of this, but I'd like you to take a minute to just share with the public your thoughts on the county receiving this letter about your incredible work.
Thank you, Commissioner Sullivan and Chair Storley, for the opportunity to give credit, not to myself, but to our fiscal team, Plaman, Dimitrov, Leah Leonard, Andy DeBoer, for their fantastic work in meeting all of our state reporting requirements in calendar year 2023. These are thirty-two different complex reports across Public Health and Human Services that they're required to complete on a quarterly basis, as well as annual reporting. Twenty twenty-three was a dynamic year for our team. Each of those staff were new to their positions in 2023, following the resignation of our former fiscal supervisor and a series of internal promotions. So, it's really remarkable that in that year of change, that team was able to complete all of the state mandated reporting requirements and in perfect order. So, thank you again for the opportunity to recognize them.
We appreciate, from the public, PHHS, from the state, Jody Harpstead, sent the letter and commending you and your team and everything on. And I'd like to have that submitted to our minutes, so it'll be in our packet for next week, so.
Absolutely. I think it's important for the public to see that letter and for your team to get the great recognition that they deserve.
Thank you.
Perfect is a pretty high mark.
Okay. So, we'll move on to employee concerns, commissioner reports. Does anyone have any meeting they'd like to update us on? Commissioner Sullivan?
Certainly. Well, had an opportunity to meet with the Airport Advisory Commission, and I appreciate Commissioner Gamble being there as the alternate, so he could meet the group and become familiar with the things that they're working on. One of the updates I want to provide is that we had had a concern from the MPCA about a gas warning system on our avgas at the airport, and the part did arrive up at the airport, and so, when the weather is a bit better, an electrician will be installing that, and we'll be up to speed. I also had an opportunity to meet with CECLP, the Cook County Local Energy Project, and, you know, they have been working without an executive director for months, and everything's kind of on hold because of grant funding, things that are happening at the federal level. Some of the funders are not real certain what will be available to them in the future. But one of the things that was discussed at this meeting is to continue to talk about how they can share resources with Public Health and Human Services, with our HRA regarding the Energy and Envelope Project. We also had a safety committee meeting in which our award from December from MCIT was discussed, and MCIT will be sending a team to Cook County on May thirteenth, and we'll take a look at some of the things our safety committee has initiated. I want to thank both Jana and Adriana for their work on that committee, and shepherding good practices, good safety practices, and improvements here in the county. One thing that's been done recently, I know everybody has seen them. I want to thank both Jana and Adriana for their work on that committee, and shepherding good practices, good safety practices, and improvements here in the county. One thing that's been done recently, I know everybody has seen them who's been in the building, is the fact that our AED kits now have overdose kits attached to them, and there's really good signage there, and that is not only here in this building, but throughout our county facilities. And then we have laminated cards, thanks to Adriana, in our county vehicles, reminding people of what to do in the event of an accident. So all the contact information in there is updated, and we appreciate that. And then yesterday, Commissioner White and I participated in the AMC legislative update, looking at the impact of shifts from state funding to county funding. And both Rowan and Brady are aware, as well as Allison, of some of those shifts, particularly important to our community, are the shifts in resources picked up by the county in terms of PHHS behavioral health and administrative costs that no longer will be sent to the county. So we will be diving into that. I know Brady is really involved in coming up with what kind of an impact that will have, and so he's working carefully with Allison's fiscal team to make sure we get that information in the very near future. And we'll be sharing that with AMC, so that they can prepare their presentations to the Senate and hopefully eventually to the House as we move forward. But they are, AMC really being strong advocates for us in terms of making sure that counties are not picking up that shift and picking up that burden. And lastly, regarding the HRA's search for an executive director, I am hopeful, as is Commissioner Gamble, that you will have a press release perhaps later today in that regard. And that would be my updates.
Anyone else?
Yeah, a number of meetings probably to update the board on. The first one was EDA-related regarding the implementation of the deed grant that we have for both Taconite Harbor as well as the transfer station, just kind of going through the process of what's involved there, and making sure that there's good lines of communication with our EDA director and the state, reporting on the grants. And so that was informative, and Brady was there too, and Mike Groth as well, and just kind of the, it sounds like the biggest concern or hurdle is just the burden of us needing to report on the proof of fair wage. And, you know, I think there's a number of projects that are going on that are gonna have that. So I didn't have a whole lot of concern, but Administrator Roth wanted to make sure we didn't downplay that burden, because it is a significant task. What else? Then, of course, we did meet as the EDA, and probably the biggest piece of news there is finding and pursuing a contract with a contractor to help us sell the golf course. And so we'll be seeing that contract at our next, in our February meeting, and hopefully moving forward on that. Moving on to, well, I attended that DCYF meeting, and I was good. There's usually a presentation and just updates on what's happening at that state level, and if there's any county concerns. And, you know, I joined the group a little late. The formation of it had been going on for a while, and there's other groups, Maxa and other groups through AMC that have kind of been helping in the formation of this group. And so there's a lot more bumps in the road in the past, and still some of the communication issues come up from county staff. But by and large, I feel like there's a lot of progress, and it's interesting, because of course, you know, some of the concerns have been, there hasn't been enough communication, we don't know what's going on, and then, of course, someone's like, there's too much communication, and I don't need this many emails, and so just finding that balance is a little tricky. But moving on to the hospital board, I sat, not for the whole meeting, but sat on Commissioner Gamble's behalf while he was at AMC. And going over the minutes from previous meetings, I just noted that we didn't have representation from the county. And I know there was some personal health or family health issues going on, but I just had been the alternate for a while and had not been asked to attend that. So I was a little surprised to see that, but most of the meeting was focused on just kind of open meeting law, and they have two new board members and kind of getting them up to speed on what their requirements are, and obligations, and duties, and the boundaries of their purview. And then I needed to go, so I never did get a chance to give an update. And, you know, before Commissioner Johnson had been assigned this task, I had been on it, and I want to recognize that, you know, we're not a voting member on the hospital board, and don't have a whole lot of influence there, but my updates, I thought, were helpful for them, as far as just letting them know what's going on in the county. And maybe there's a better way to do that, but having that direct interaction and being able to answer questions and just speak to some of the discussion that we've been having, I found was really helpful. And then also, it benefited me on my perspective of what's going on around the rest of the state and what our local community is experiencing, and then tying that into AMC, and whether it's reimbursement rates, or just insurance issues, or EMS services, like it all, getting that big picture, I think, is really important. And I felt like the hospital board really benefited my perspective on the big picture. But if the board decides that we shouldn't be attending that meeting, I can see that perspective too, so. The library board is the same day, and probably the biggest discussion was around, there was some discussion about just director review and library review and that sort of thing, but just the safety of the library, as I hope you're all aware, there had been some threats made to library staff in the last year, and that has really shaken the library as a whole. And going through that, we've had law enforcement do some trainings, or training at least, as well as federal agencies giving recommendations, and just an analysis of the building and where the risks are, and to what degree do we want to try to protect, and the impacts that has on like the culture, or just the layout of the building and that sort of thing. So it was a really good discussion, and I really appreciate the staff's willingness to participate in that and give the feedback and just their thoughts, because, you know, as board members, we're not sitting in the library on the regular necessarily as much as they are, so they have a really unique perspective there. And that's probably all to report on for today.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
Madam Chair, I'll just give a quick outline of the AMC's Government 101. MCIT risk management, of course, is always something, as new commissioners, you want to understand, you want to understand the role that MCIT plays. I sat on that board previously in my first term, always impressed with the organization, its leadership and its discipline, the people that sit on their board, and the knowledge that they have, so that's, it's just refreshing to see an organization that's run well and has good leadership. So they made a presentation, open meeting law, understanding the quorum issue and gifting issues, and it has to be under $5, which nowadays, you know, I mean, AMC had a mug there, and they assured us that they paid less than $5, so you can take it home. I didn't take one home, but.
I might give a drink out of it.
Yeah, I should have, if you wanted one, I could have brought it home here, but. And so that was part of the discussion, demographics. My comment in that regard is demographics are an umbrella of understanding, but knowing how we get to these demographics, what's influencing them, is really the critical part, and how that plays out to us as a county, is looking at our population and its shifts. We know, next to Aiken County, we have the highest percentage of people above retirement age in the state, of the 87 counties. We are at a point in our state demographics, which can be probably true across the board within the United States, that we have more people that are dying than are being born. And so when you understand, well, what do these shifts in demographics really mean for us, as to, let's just look at Social Security, and the number of people that you have that are working and funding Social Security for those that are taking, you know, retirement benefits? But, so, my comment was that the umbrella picture is helpful, but really knowing what's contributing that is very important, so there was significant discussion on that. The other was the county administrator, the position, and budget. Budget had two administrators from two small counties, Rock County and the other, I think, was Stevens. Rock County, he's been in his position for 13, 14 years, and just an excellent presentation. They had their, to speak to the issues of differences that exist in counties, there are some things that are structural and fundamental that apply to all counties. And so this is why the issue of best practices is hugely important. But when you look at spreadsheets, and you look at their process, and you look at how they do things, you've got Dakota County, Hennepin County, and the multiple departments, and their budget's crazy, but that was beneficial. So I appreciated that. And then the one, just how do you manage conflict? How do you manage differences in opinions? And that just sort of seems to be something that's escalated in our present culture. Part of our discipline is trying to separate ourself and our egos and our wants, so that we focus on the things that we're tasked to do, and so, all beneficial. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll just report on my report. Last, Public Health and Human Services, you remember, I talked about federal cutting of Medicaid, and now I understand that Governor Walz is looking at that also statewide. So I think we need to be really, really cognizant of what, how that could affect our county. And I don't know how many people are involved in Medicaid, but over the next few weeks, we probably will know that, and just be prepared for what we need to do to help folks in that particular area. Okay, so we have a list of all of our committee meetings coming up, and correspondence, the community center board, that's good, maybe we'll continue to have that on our agenda. Heart of the Continent, we discussed that. Sales tax. And before we adjourn, Brady, do you have any news?
No, just that they're planning to attend on Monday.
Okay, good.
So they'll work on the numbers in between.
All right, so there we are, Monday.
If I get something early, we get something earlier, we'll send that out.
Oh, sure, okay. Monday, 8:30 AM.
Madam Chair, do you know, Rowan, are we, which is gonna happen first? Relative to the discussion on county administrator, or relative to the transfer station?
Right.
If Ellers showing up in time.
Yeah, I'll defer to coordinating with the board chair as we set the agenda here today, but I would think probably have Ellers go first would make the most sense.
The Green, I would like that.
Yeah.
Sooner the better.
As long as there's not snow.
If there isn't anything else, I'll hear, oh.
Is there a motion to set a special meeting?
The special meeting was already on the calendar.
I'll hear a motion to adjourn.
It's removed.
Support? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Thank you, everybody. Good discussion on everything. And Adriana got it all. Otherwise, you were listening.
I filled this out last year, and you expressed it.